Okay, welcome to the November Watertown School Board Meeting and I'll call the meeting to order and we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, on the consent agenda, item 2.1 roll call, please note all board members are present. Item 2.2, are there any conflicts of interest this evening that need to be disclosed by the board members? If not, move to 2.3 and we need to review and approve the agenda. Could we have a motion, please?
I move approval of the agenda.
Motion by Moulton.
Second.
Second by Iverson, any comments, questions? Hearing none, all in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. 2.4, we need to approve the minutes of our October 10th, 13th, November 1st, November 7th, November 8th and 9th meetings. Can we do all those in one motion? Okay.
I move approval of those minutes as stated.
Motion by Stein.
Second.
Second by Laura. Any comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor of approval of the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. And 2.5, we'll receive the financial reports for October.
Thank you. I do appreciate that we put this on the agenda before we recognize the staff and students so they get a chance to hear about the financials. Everybody's favorite part. Thank you. In the general fund, a small amount of tax proceeds was received along with the regular monthly state aid payment. Note that the second half of 2021 taxes payable in 2022 is noted to be received in November. Just to note, October and May financials are the low reportable cash balance operations within the district funds due to the anticipation of receiving taxes the following month. Property tax is the main source of revenue for K-12 education. The state aid amount will be adjusted in November to reflect confirmed enrollment numbers. Receding of the cares allocations and previous financials creates an influx in ending cash balance when compared to the prior years. The revenue was moderate in the capital outlay fund consisting of typical property taxes. The expenses, which included a construction in progress and debt service payment exceeded the revenue. This fund's ending cash position is below previous years as payments are made on the progress of the construction to the remodel as well as stadium phasing. In the special education fund, the monthly state aid payment was received for October along with a small amount of property taxes. Expenditures exceeded the revenue allocation as typical for October. Other activity for the K-12 financials includes activity in nutrition services in which expenditures exceeded the revenue during the month with fluctuating inventory and students working through established lunch account payments. This fund is anticipated to steadily decline in order to accommodate the spend down plan of federal funds received under the SSO operation in which provided free meals to students in the last previous years. The spend down plan includes free status for those on reduced eligibility as well as equipment purchases to enhance the program. Limited activity was seen in the funds of drivers' education, preschool services and custodial operations. Arena concessions had revenue exceed the expenditures during the month and the cash balance at month end is consistent with that of the prior year. For Lake Area Tech, they received revenue from a wide variety of sources. The expenses included construction in progress payments for both the diesel expansion, archway complex and parking lot projects. This fund's ending cash position reflects an anticipated decrease to accommodate construction in progress payments. Revenue sources from both the foundation and House Bill 1031 to offset construction is anticipated in future months. Activity in bookstore, Lake Area food service and EduCare was moderate with all funds maintaining a healthy cash balance. In the employee benefit trust, administrative costs exceeded the premiums during the month. This fund's ending cash position has declined from previous years. As we route our way through the last quarter of the year, high cost claims will meet individual stop loss and reinsurance credits will assist with offsetting some of those reportable high claims. I would be happy to answer any questions should you have any.
Thank you, Heidi. Next we get to what you're all mostly here for, the student and staff recognition.
It's good to see the families back in here, students, good to see you, parents, other folks who came with. It has been since March 9th, 2020 since we've actually had students recognized onsite at the board meeting. So after a couple of years of kind of limiting the amount of people in here, we're so happy to have you. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to announce some of the student recognition. When I call your name, if you would come up and then one of our board members will hand you a certificate, that'd be your time to get pictures if you want one, getting their certificate. So first, congratulations to the WHS golf team. They finished third place at the AA Boys Golf Meet this fall in Mitchell and also captured the title for the ESD Championship. And here tonight, congratulations are in order for Jake Olson. He was our state runner-up. There you go, smile at the camera Jake, you're good. You were just on TV too, that's what I was, yeah. And then our WHS girls tennis team also won the title of ESD champs and we had two young ladies who finished first in the Flight Two doubles. Congratulations to Jada Young and Leila Meester. And for our soccer teams, first I'm going to announce the All-State. And we had three All-Staters. Earning second team All-State for girls soccer was Caitlin Hanson. And in boys, also earning second team All-State was Ryan Robey. Hold, there you go. And finally, we have academic All-Staters in soccer this year. And I'm going to ask that the boys academic All-State stay up here after I call your name and we'll get, there'll be one group shot here. Earning academic All-State for the boys soccer team, Jackson Fiesner, Ryan Robey, Ethan Bowling and Logan Stimson. We'll get, if they want one group shot here, gentlemen. And on the girls' side, we had, also had, well, we had five academic All-Staters. Caitlin Hanson, Amelia Ebson, Reagan Campbell, Riley Campbell and Elizabeth Olson. Congratulations to all recipients tonight, thanks for joining us.
Congrats, everybody. This is the spot in the meeting where I'll pause in case anybody wants to head out. I'd love to have you all stay. All right, it's fun to have a full room again. All right, moving on to the discussion items for Lake Area, first of all, 3.1, is there any public input this evening on agenda or non-agenda items? Okay, move to 4.1 and the personnel items, 4.1.1, the resignations.
President Reiber, we have two resignations for your approval and we'd recommend approving these resignations tonight.
Do we have a motion, please?
Move approval of the resignations as presented.
Motion by Stein.
Second.
Second by Laura, any comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. 4.1.2, the contract recommendations and addendums.
We have several temporary part-time recommendations including snow removal as well as adjunct instructors and corporate education contracts and we would recommend that you approve these contracts as presented.
Okay, motion, please.
I will make a motion to approve the contract recommendations.
Motion by Laura.
Second.
Second by Stein, comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. We'll move to the property items on 4.2.1, consider a CDL tractor bid.
So as you know, we're expanding our CDL training at Lake Area Tech. We present to you the tractor bid grid and we recommend approving the bid for Harlow's Truck and Bus Sales Bid B due to the engine specifications for tooling as well as the horsepower. It'll fit our CDL program the best out of those presented.
Do we have a motion, please?
I move approval of Harlow's Truck bid for Bid B.
Motion by Moulton.
Second.
Second by Iverson to approve the bid for the tractor, any comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. 4.2.2, consider the Boys and Girls Club Gym Rental Agreement.
We've been fortunate to partner with the Boys and Girls Club each year since 2019 to offer intermural volleyball and basketball options and so I would recommend that we approve the, or that you approve the lease agreement for the Boys and Girls Club with the dates as specified.
Okay, motion, please.
I move that we approve the Boys and Girls Club Gym Rental Agreement.
Motion by Iverson.
Second.
Second by Moulton, comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. And now we have 4.2.3 and some lease agreements to consider.
We have three equipment lease agreements before you today. There are two tractors that are no-cost lease agreements from Kibble Equipment in support of the technology program as well as a wheel loader, reduce cost lease for our heavy equipment operator program and we would recommend approval.
Motion, please.
I move approval of the Kibble two tractors and the wheel loader as stated.
Motion by Moulton. Second by Iverson, comments or questions on the lease agreements? Hearing none, all in favor of, oops, sorry.
Oh, just a quick note of thanks, thanks to Kibble.
Sorry. All right, all in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. 4.2.4, consider change order number one for the parking lot construction.
So there's a change order in the amount of $7,872 to add curb and gutter to one of the parking lots that we've expanded on the south end of campus and we'd recommend approving this change.
Okay, motion, please.
I will move that we consider change order number one.
Motion by Iverson.
Second.
Second by Moulton to approve change order number one for the parking lot construction, comments or questions on that? Hearing none, all in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. 4.2.5, consider change order number one for the archway complex.
Yes, the proposed change order consists of three modifications to the project in the amount of a $105,704 deduction to the contract. A majority of this credit is in relation to several changes identified during the engineer process. The change includes revisions to window shades and lighting packages for cost savings. Per contractor coordination while revisions were made to select areas to reduce the scope and make installation easier. The construction contingency was approved at just over a million and the change order adjusts the remaining contingency to 1.1 million. So this leaves the contract for the project adjusted to just over 20 million for that total archway project.
Okay, motion, please.
I move approval of change order number one for the archway complex as stated and explained.
Motion by Moulton.
Second.
Second by Iverson, any comments or questions on that change order? Hearing none, all in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. 4.2.6, consider the change order number one for the diesel expansion.
Yes, the proposed change order consists of nine modifications to the project in the amount of $64,388 and this is in addition to the contract. Majority of this increase is for the revisions to a bifold door and added asphalt scope. The construction contingency was approved at $388,600 and the change order adjusts the remaining contingency to $324,212. The contract for this project is then adjusted to just over 7.8 million.
Okay, motion, please.
I move that we accept change order number one for the diesel expansion.
Motion by Iverson.
Second.
And then second by Moulton to approve this change order, any comments or questions here? Hearing none, all in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. And 4.2.7, consider surplus property resolution.
There's just one item on the surplus property resolution tonight and that's the former King Air airplane that we had acquired through federal surplus in 1996 and our newest airplane replaces this airplane. So we were asking to have permission to dispose of the airplane.
Okay, motion, please.
I move acceptance of the surplus resolution as explained.
Motion by Moulton.
Second.
Second by Iverson, any comments or questions on the surplus resolution? Hearing none, all in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Stiles. Moving on to discussion items for 14-4, is there any public input this evening on agenda or non-agenda items for the K-12 side? Okay, if not, 5.2 is the Northeast Tech High School report.
Thanks. The Board of Superintendent did meet on November 1st, really kind of a recap for those board members who are, it was kind of a recap of the, what you saw at the October board meeting of the Northeast Tech Board where Bert went through the numbers of slots and fills and all that kind of stuff in the program. So that was kind of how that went and then a reminder to those board members that we do have the meeting this Wednesday at 5:45 at Northeast Tech.
Okay, thank you. Item 5.3, American Education Week update.
Yeah, thanks, I think we have some WA folks here. I know that Allison Foster is going to talk a little bit about American Education Week and is it president-elect or vice president? All right.
All right, thank you for having me speak today on behalf of the Watertown Education Association. My name's Allison Foster, I am the president-elect of WEA. Our president Stephanie Hagaman was unable to attend this meeting tonight. First of all, I want to say thank you to the school board for being such an enormous advocate for our educators and our students. I think it's remarkable that I get to be here and express my gratitude to two of my former high school teachers and also two parents of students that I've had and that still have. Here, this is what we've been up to this year. Each month we are hosting a seminar geared towards different topics that have been of interest to our members such as classroom management, knowing your contract, WEA member benefits, eliminating student loan debt, education policies, Title IX, local bargaining and legislative updates and family and community engagement. And so all of those events have been really well received by our members. Monthly meetings happen with our representatives from each building in the district to discuss successes and concerns throughout the district. Monthly meetings we meet with Dr. Danielson to address concerns and help brainstorm solutions. This week we are celebrating our members during American Education Week with a little surprise for them each day. Overall, the school year started off really smoothly and seems to be continuing as such in the second quarter. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks to all of our faculty and staff, we celebrate all of them this week and there will be some treats on Wednesday, I believe, in the various school workrooms, compliments of the district, so look for those Wednesday morning.
Okay, thank you. Next is item 5.4 and Mr. Barrios will present the achievement report.
So I have this last year's achievement report for the Watertown School District from state testing and school attendance and such, we'll cover that this evening. We're looking at smarter balance scores, ACT scores and also senior survey results that are collected each year. This first slide just shows our demographics throughout our district. You can see that we're pretty steady throughout the district and as we compare to the rest of the state, we're about a normal demographic wise with those across the state. Looking at our teacher data for K-4, our average years of experience for our teachers are a little over 13 years. In the 5-6 building, about 13 years. Our middle school, 15 years of experience and our high school, just under 15 years of experience. With the recent turnover, obviously these last couple of years, it's still good to see that we have experience in our buildings but that will likely change as years come. And you can note that as well, you can see where our newest teachers are at, the K-4, the 5-6 buildings, we have about 17 and 21% of teachers have three years of experience and less. Looking at our state testing data, we've been holding steady, I guess, with what our state assessments look like. Again, this is for grades three through five, grades three through eight and juniors that test each spring. We still do not have student progress data as that looks at student testing over a period of like three years. And so with our COVID year that was in there, years, that kind of put a wrench in collecting that data and tracking that, but we still get this data that we can look at. This is for our public to view. As individual school buildings and district, we get more specialized data that allows us obviously to look at each individual student, classroom and so forth. Here again, looking across our district, this is 7, 8 and 9, 12. Things that we've noticed that we want to be looking at and keeping an eye on are our math testing at the district or at the state level. We feel that this is something that will start to be addressed as we look at utilizing our MAP NWEA testing, that we are now in our second year of utilizing that. That is separate from our state testing. We do this three times a year and it also gives us a better snapshot of individual students and individual classrooms of how students are progressing in math and ELA and science throughout the school year instead of waiting until year end to look at student data. So the high school uses a college and career coursework and assessment readiness scoring, so it's different than our elementary, intermediate and middle school. On the left-hand side of this table is showing how we are scored on our assessment readiness. The first way to show that to the state that you're assessment ready as a senior in the content of ELA is to meet one of these three options. Score a Level 3 or 4 on your state assessment, score an 18 on your ACT English and also score a 263 or higher on your Accuplacer. On the math side, same thing with the state assessment, you need to score a 3 or a 4 or have an ACT math score of 20 or score high enough on the Accuplacer as well. Another option to show that you're assessment ready as a senior is to score a Silver or higher on the NCRC or the National Career Readiness Certificate. This is a separate assessment that is given to students across the state. This would be an assessment that can use, that can be used for, let's say if I don't go to post-secondary school but I have a Silver, Gold, Platinum, NCRC certificate, there are some businesses that will accept that as showing that you're ready to work for them at their business. On the other side of this, at the high school level, is showing that you are coursework ready for college and career. This has changed quite a bit over the past few years. This last spring was the first time now that we show that a student has earned one or more endorsements and that's through the type of coursework pathway that they are taking courses throughout high school. And there's three different endorsements that they can get. They combine these two to show if a student is college, career, coursework ready. Should have flipped these around, but these are ACT. ACT scores have been pretty steady across our district and the state and nationally for quite some time, so not a whole lot of change there. This is looking at the report card specifically to our high school. You can see Watertown highlighted here. This is where you're going to see ELA and math proficiency for our juniors. Juniors are the only one that test in high school. On-time graduation rate, so that means that I started as a freshman, I graduate as a senior, 90% of our students did that. High school completion means that maybe I started as a freshman, dropped out, began a GED maybe a year later. That then comes back to give us a point, so to speak, and we have 95% of our students that complete high school in some way. This is looking at the college career readiness, back to that table that I just explained. Can see that Watertown, we have 84% of last year's senior were coursework ready, meaning that they had taken coursework that aligns with the endorsements that the state has put in place. 30% of our students were assessment ready and 30% of our students, college and career ready. This is again something that we're looking at to see how we can get our seniors more assessment ready as identified here after they leave our high school. Looking at the senior exit survey results, for this last year's seniors, over half are looking at attending a four-year college. You can see that this has actually gone down over the past five years. We have about 20% that are looking at technical or vocational school. 13%, which is the highest in the past five years, are going to enter the workforce. Holding steady at about 2.5% will be going to the military and our largest in the last five years, almost 11% are unsure what they're going to be doing. Those that are going to be going to post-secondary, it is of note that we had 248 of 269 complete this survey. 20% will be going to Lake Area and you can see the rest of the universities or colleges that they'll be looking to attend. These are just the top vote-getters. The areas of study that they plan to go into, six... The areas of study that they plan to go into, 6% education, 6% business, engineering, nursing, agriculture, and automotive, round out the top vote-getters. It's a brief overview, but open for any questions that you might have.
Hi, good evening. Thanks for your report. So, for economically disadvantaged, is that, how is that determined? Wouldn't be, probably be a good idea to remind the public.
So, economically disadvantaged would be those that are qualifying for free reduced meals. And you can see that as, like in this, K-4 through 9, 12, the number actually goes down. And we believe that what I've seen mostly is as students get into the high school or upper grade levels, families start to not fill out the form that we need. And so, it is a good reminder to families to fill out our free reduced meal application, even if you're not sure if you will qualify. But this helps students with obviously free reduced meals, also lowered costs or free testing for post-secondary plans, things like that. So, but that's how that's calculated.
Thank you. Appreciate that. So, the smarter balance is covering years 21 and just part of 22, but not...
Yep. So, our state report card here is for state testing that would have happened in this last spring. So, the state testing that was done by our students in April, May of 2022. It is different, though, when looking at our high school. College career readiness, coursework stuff, when they calculate a high school score, they're looking at this year's seniors and their junior year of testing. So, it would have been those last year's seniors that would have tested in the spring of '21, actually.
For ACT scores, the top score for an ACT is...
36, I believe.
36? Back in my day, it was 30. Okay, report cards. That's all the data that's available online, so anyone can go look at that and compare schools and so on. For the senior surveys, are there other questions that are asked besides where you're going, what's your career plans?
There was a few other questions. These were kind of the main ones that really make sense to report, I guess.
Yeah, I was thinking there were other questions, too. Be curious. So, looking at improvement. I did go through the high school, middle school. These are class sizes and so on. There's always room for improvement wherever, things we can look at. And areas or subject matters that I noticed still had large classes. Spanish in particular, almost as if we could use another halftime Spanish teacher. Science, particularly in the 9th and 10th grade level, large classes there. Freshman speech, very large. That's an area that could be reduced. And several social studies classes are also quite large. Depends what the state's going to do with the state's social studies standards, whether we need to look at how much more academically rigorous we need to be at the high school. For instance, some of those classes, regular sections, you only take the class like World Geography, nine weeks. If you're taking the accelerated version, you take it for a semester. And that's true with some of the other social studies classes. So, regular classes are getting almost nine weeks less instruction. Block scheduling, when we went to that, obviously, we struggled with test scores. That makes a difference, but that's probably something we have to live with. And one other thing I'd like to mention. One of the other drivers of, well, actually, a couple of things are the drivers of larger classes. One is forcing the computer to actually jimmy the figures. And we talked about this earlier today, too. The max level in the computer printout is 30. So, if we force the computer to actually start at 25 for a class size and force it to juggle and equalize classes, balance them a bit more. The other thing that really caused, excuse me, caused the spike in oversized classes, particularly at the high school, was the addition of Arrow Academy. Because it pulled out teachers that we needed in core subjects, and it left the remaining teachers in core subjects with much larger classes. And I think that impacts students in particularly social studies, English, Spanish, and so on. It really impacted. So, I think that's something we should look at, and actually, I always felt that those students should be in accelerated classes with full instruction rather than go over in the corner and teach yourself. I think that they would get much better instruction and help.
Hello, good evening. Couple of the things that I found really interesting, the average years of experience, that actually kind of blew me away. Basically, averaging 13 to 15 years of experience across the board in all buildings and grades. That's pretty incredible, something to be proud of. We had a good discussion earlier today about the math performance. I'm not happy with the math performance. I have been on the board long enough to know that this has been an ongoing challenge for the district. And you'd mentioned MAP testing, basically, if I'm understanding it correctly, where we do various test points throughout the year so that we can pinpoint and have a more strategic approach with who we're teaching or how we're teaching and help them get up to speed. Did I summarize that fairly?
Yep, absolutely. So, comparing like our MAP testing to our state testing, state testing given just once in the spring every year. And so, as a teacher, if I was using state testing alone, a lot of times, obviously, I'm getting last year's third graders, and I'm now having them as a fourth grader, and I'm using last year's kind of assessment of where they're at. Would say that our, the NWA MAP testing, Measures of Academic Progress, allows us now to get a snapshot of a student right in the first couple of weeks of school where they're at. Again, after our Christmas break, kind of at semester time, and then again around state testing time, where now, as a teacher, I can see, okay, here's students that are maybe behind grade level, or they should be at for a fourth grader, let's say. And so, now between the fall and the winter testing window, I can maybe pinpoint some strategies or extra pieces of support for these students to help them progress a little quicker to get on grade level.
But Dr. Danielson, correct me if I'm wrong, but haven't we done this already? Haven't we been doing MAP testing already?
We had used a different product. It was called Mastery Connect that we tried. That was a little more formative and teacher-created. And we recently switched last year to the MAP testing, which is a little more normed and tied in with kind of pre-made questions that align more closely to the, what I would call the state content standards. And so, it's probably a little more targeted, what we're trying to do the last, since we purchased that a year ago. And so, this is only our second year with this one. So, we've tried other methods of it, but we feel there's less ambiguity in the questions when they are, you know, pulling them directly off of, based off the standards versus having to create them ourselves. That was probably where we ran into some snags with Mastery Connect. And this one is K-12 versus, we've done some other, like you maybe have heard, if you've heard of like Ames Web testing, that's one that was done more in the lower grades. And so, this one is district-wide so that we can try and reach the K-12 spectrum of students.
And this is also going to be a test like our state testing, where the questions get harder, easier based on where that student is at. And really allows us to pinpoint specifically to a student where their areas of highest need are. I haven't not worked with Mastery Connect, but the MAP testing is like our state testing where it's adaptive in pushing a student further on the assessment to see how high they can really go or adapting lower questions to see maybe how far actually they are behind compared to the grade level.
Math seems to be a problem all the way across the state, except for one of these districts. I know we've struggled with Common Core here in this district. Hopefully, we've gotten rid of most of that. But I know at the high school, one of the culprits is block scheduling. Freshmen, for instance, can take Algebra 1 in the fall semester, but then they might not be signed up for their next math or algebra class until spring, a whole year or so later. Not the spring of the same year, academic year, but a whole year, year and a half later. So, continuity between immediate learning from one section to the next section, there's a big gap, and I know that's hurt us.
Yeah, it just, it just seems like this is an ongoing topic every year. So, I would just challenge the administration team. What do you need from the board in order for us to move the needle a little bit more on that lever? Is it talking about the block scheduling? Is it a whole different conversation? I just, you know, the definition of insanity, you just keep doing the same thing expecting different results. And we've got Mastery Connect, and now it's going to be a waiting period to find out if this program's going to work two years from now, once the data finally rolls in. I just, I'd really like to figure out a way that we can move this needle. I don't have the answers. I'm just trying to pose some questions to get us to think about it.
Yeah, I don't think it's for lack of effort. You know, Ms. Moulton pointed out, one of the things that, and it's not a response to anything done in Watertown that is frustrating to me is, from a state level, to be a successful school might be 60% proficiency. That, to me, rings true, or rings of, is the assessment, the correct assessment to the standards. I realize I'm saying 60%, and I can see where we're at, at the high school level. But when you look at that, even the second highest number in the ESD schools there is 56% proficient and advanced. So, it makes, I, it's hard when you, you know, the success is not, doesn't seem what I would call traditional success. If you say you're getting 56% in school, that does not sound successful. And yet, when you compare the other large schools, 56 is pretty darn good. It doesn't, I know that I'm not addressing what's going on in Watertown, but I'm thinking more holistically here about, I'm not sure what the answer is in terms of true success there. But obviously, you can always show the incremental success to keep progressing forward. But, I mean, we are looking at it at all levels, you know, the K-4, it looks a little different. In the 5-8, there's some things that we're looking at and working on. And then, of course, at the high school level, it's a matter of, you know, maybe looking at the course sequencing, some of that stuff to work within the system we have as well as continuing with the content standards. Some of the assessment things, as far as like when we talk about the MAP testing, is a little different at the high school level because, you know, even, not whether you're in block or not, not everyone is taking math every single year. And so, some of it is, it's difficult even from that MAP testing perspective to figure out how you can improve. Because if, I'll just say, for example, if all juniors take the MAP test and not all juniors are in a math class, there's not really a good way to improve their math, even if we discover that they're not, you know, progressing the way we'd like with their math skills. So, some of that is at the high school level when you only have the one grade. There's not a, two, it's a little bit, it's not as clean as when you try and compare somebody who goes from third grade to their fourth grade to their fifth grade to theirs. You know, in 3 through 8, they take it all, you know, every year. So, it's a little easier to keep plugging an individual student forward that may not result in school-wide increases. But obviously, if every student increases a little bit, you should have the corresponding reaches. That high school number is a little tough when freshmen and sophomore year, they don't actually, they aren't assessed on the state. So, I know I didn't really answer your question of what are we going to do differently or what can we do? But I think you've got people in the room who it is on their minds, and it's part of their, you know, the work they do in their buildings and as well as the staff. We have good data conversations at our, you know, at our monthly meetings that we have. And we're actively seeking solutions, but obviously, you know, you're looking at the results there.
You know, in all fairness, this is just one test. We also give a pre-ACT. We give other tests. So, this is just one quick snapshot. And actually, pre-COVID, the math scores were actually quite good. I remember congratulating the math department because they were quite high. And that would have been, what, two, three years ago? So, unknown factors.
Right. And the ACT scores are right in there, too.
It would be good to look at what the math scores are on ACT.
The other last comment that I would make that is for, from a Lake Area Tech perspective is, I'm sure Diane and Mike saw the data, but it's just interesting to see the upward trend from 2018 to 2021 with people leaving the high school and going to technical vocational school. And then, the sudden 9% decrease from '21 to '22. And it looks like those folks are going right into the workforce versus going to Lake Area Tech. So, from a strategic standpoint, that's definitely something that should be on their radar. I'm sure it already is. And how can, how can, how can we maybe get ahead of that curve if that trend continues for the next few years?
Good discussion. Thanks, guys. We'll move to the action items. And first of all, 6.1, approval of the bills. Could we have a motion, please?
I move approval of the bills.
Motion by Moulton.
Second.
Second by Iverson. Any questions on any of the bills? Hearing none, all in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. We'll move on to the personnel items and 6.2.1, the resignations.
Before you are, five resignations recommended for your approval.
I move approval of the resignations as presented.
Motion by Stein.
Second.
Second by Lor to approve the resignations. Comments? Hearing none, all in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. 6.2.2, the contract recommendations and addendums.
Again, here are those presented recommendations for your consideration. Most notably highlighted there, I'm sure Dr. Brist maybe did some singing when he heard that we were able to fill the vocal position finally at the middle school. But we did get that one filled as well.
Okay, can we have a motion, please?
Nicely stated.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Lor.
Second.
Second by Stein to approve the contract recommendations and addendums. Any other comments? Hearing none, all in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. And then, we have 6.2.3 and an authority to hire.
And these are two special education professionals at Mallett in order to meet IEP for students.
Okay, motion, please.
I will make a motion to authority to hire them.
Motion by Lor.
Second.
Second by Stein to approve the authority to hires. Any comments, questions? Hearing none, all in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. We'll move to 6.3 and the property items. And first of all, point one, the consider the Sourcewell Cooperative stage bid.
Yes, the district requests the authority to purchase a stage for the high school under a Sourcewell contract in the amount of $46,400. under a Sourcewell contract in the amount of $46,463. This expenditure will be covered using the CARES II federal funding allocation.
Okay, motion, please.
I move to accept the Sourcewell Cooperative stage bid.
Motion by Iverson. Second by Moulton. Any comments on this bid?
This is for the arena, is that correct? It's movable?
Yep, that's correct. It's a portable stage.
So it's the stage we use for graduation and prom and all that. Okay. All right. Any other questions, comments? Hearing none, all in favor of approving the bid, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. And we'll move to 6.4, and the student enrollment requests.
Yes, under your open enrollment, we have four open enrollments that we are recommending for your approval.
Motion, please.
Move approval of the open enrollments as presented.
Motion by Stein.
Second.
Second by Lor to approve the open enrollments. Comments? Hearing none, all in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. And then we have our 132810.
Yes, we have one 132810 request that we are also recommending for your approval.
Could we have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve the 132810.
Motion by Lor.
Second.
Second by Stein to approve the 132810. Questions? Hearing none, all in favor of approval, say aye.
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 Motion carries. And now we move on to the items under communications. And first of all, the administrative reports.
Thanks. Couple items of note. One of them, just kind of for public progress, with Phase 1 of the athletic facility, we did give in, concede to the winter. We are, we're working on that. And due to needing to have consistent 50-degree temperatures in order to spray the track surface and paint and stripe it, we agreed to move that to the spring. So that progress would take whenever in the spring we get to that, where it looks like we're going to have a couple of weeks of 50-degree temperatures. So that is, that is just kind of, need people to know that. So that means not open yet, still considered a construction site until such time that we were able to open it fully. Just heads up for the board that we, the elections are over, we will be looking for a time to meet with our legislative representation here, hopefully in December prior to the new year. And so we'll let you know on that. And that's, and then just another note, probably more from the public, that we're working on our 2324 school calendar and hope to have that for you at the December school board meeting for your approval. So as we look ahead for the upcoming school year, which sounds kind of, we're only halfway, not even halfway through this one, but we'll be already looking ahead at next year's calendar here for the December board meeting.
All right. Thank you. Under 7.2, is there anything for the board to report to the superintendent? As we're looking forward to Lake Area's Festival of Trees on Friday night. All right, if nothing else there, I need a motion for us to go into executive session for the purpose of discussing personnel.
I move we go into executive session.
Motion by Moulton. Second by Iverson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Okay, thanks for coming. There will be no action following the executive session.